And then retire.
We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, welcome to the April 15, 2024 work session of the Shawnee County Board of County Commissioners. My name is Kevin Cook, I service the Chair this year. Joining me today is also Commissioner Bill Rippon, good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioner Mays, good morning. And then our County Counselor Rich Eckert is joining us down at the end. Good morning.
Good morning.
We have up first this morning a presentation from the MTAA, Metropolitan Topeka Airport Authority, and I think Curtis Sneeden and Brian Armstrong, you guys are going to kind of kick us off.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. I'm Curtis Sneeden, I'm the Director of Development for the Metropolitan Topeka Airport Authority. I'm joined by the Chair of our Board, Brian Armstrong, and our President and Director of Airports, Eric Johnson, is with us here this morning as well. We are pleased to be with you here on this Monday to give you an update on the future of aviation in Shawnee County. You are all well aware that this community has embarked on a strategy to elevate itself to new heights. Most of you took part in the development of the strategy called Momentum 2027. Our aviation assets are a key part of that strategy, and we're here to tell you about what the MTAA is trying to do to wring as much economic value as we can out of our air parks and really turn them into the dynamos that they could be. I have found in almost every conversation I have about the MTAA that it is helpful to back up and put some framing around what the MTAA is, because even though it seems obvious to us, there are some basics that deserve revisiting. The MTAA was created in 1974, about a year after Forbes Air Force Base was deactivated. And then in 1978, the voters of Shawnee County created the Joint City-County Airport Authority to do the things you see there on the slide. That's language from the statute. We are to acquire, own, maintain, improve, dispose of, generally take care of those airport properties. And so that's what we do in three broad realms. One of them, we call Topeka Regional Airport. If you're a native Topeka like me, you still say Forbes just out of habit, but we call it, it is called Topeka Regional Airport. The hundreds of acres to the west of that airfield are called Topeka Regional Business Center. And then we're also responsible for Philip Billard Airport as well. All three of those are within our purview. Brian?
So wanted to just touch on the overall board structure. So we have five directors on our board, two appointed by Shawnee County, Mike Munson and myself. I think Mike's term, this is the last year of his current term, I think he would be eligible to serve another three-year term if he and the Commission so chose. We also have three appointed by the City of Topeka, and all five of our Board of Directors that are under Eric Johnson, our President. So the org structure of Eric's team, Eric as President has police and fire, airport operations, a maintenance department, Philip Billard, the MRO services, admin and finance, and then Curtis and his team with economic development.
So Brian and I aren't here to do a deep dive into the MTAA's budget, that's all public, but I thought you might find it to be helpful to just look at the pie in a gross way and see that from a revenue point of view, there are two big slices. One of them is that we are a taxing entity. We receive a little less than half of our funding from property taxes, so when the taxpayers in Shawnee County, if they ever look at their levy sheet, they'll see we're right on there with the county and the city and the library and the others. We also receive revenues from rental of our properties, from fuel flowage fees, every gallon or pound of fuel that gets sold at our airports results in the airport getting a little charge from that. Our job is to manage our assets in a way that optimizes your return on those dollars, the taxpayers' return on those dollars. We're also bound by law, by the fact that we are airports subject to federal law, to work towards financial self-sustainability, and that has certain types of implications as we enter into transactions. We are always needing to work in a way such that our leasing transactions and our other business interactions make us more and more financially self-sustainable. And then we are bound by regulations with the Federal Aviation Administration to make sure that our properties are available to all types of aeronautical activities. These are our jobs. Now, the MTAA leadership has set an ambitious course for Topeka's aviation assets. You may have noted in yesterday's paper that Mr. Renshaw did a very nice article that helped explain where we're trying to go. We are doing our best to raise both of these airfields up and attract more industry in the area that's called maintenance, repair, and overhaul, aerospace components, and other types of advanced manufacturing. We're doing our best to attract those types of businesses. And the way we're doing that is we are working on upgrading our aeronautical facilities and our infrastructure. We are collaborating with local economic developers such as GoToPika and our local educators such as Washburn University and Washburn Tech. And we are really trying to write a fresh story about Topeka's aviation assets and the unique attributes that we could present to site selectors and firms considering locating here. Of note is that we have recently invested over $5 million in Billard Airport in Topeka's historic Oakland neighborhood. We are very proud of our new terminal building there. It includes an executive conference room, a multi-use space, a commercial kitchen. We've also done a lot of work at Philip Billard in terms of fixing the roofs over the T-hangers and painting those hangers and just generally trying to raise the level of the facilities there. So Billard, in our minds, occupies a special place, not just because of its heritage and history, but because it really could be a boutique kind of high-tech hub in the future play here, if we play our cards right. We are trying to take our place in what has been dubbed the Kansas Aerospace Triad, and Mr. Renshaw's article explored that a little bit. Wichita is known as the aviation capital of the world. Wichita, Salina, and Topeka all have runways that are long enough to land wide-body jumbo jets. Topeka's runway is actually the longest one in the state of Kansas at 12,803 feet. That means a lot to the types of companies that need, say Boeing 777s worked on, it is an important amenity of ours. All three of those airports have those types of airfields, and so working together, we stand to capture an enormous new type of sector in this, what we call MRO. And it has to do with bringing in wide-body jets and reconfiguring them so that, in the case of the Boeing 777, converting them from passenger jets into freight aircraft. There is a huge demand for that. There is a lot of potential, very lucrative work to be done there. It requires high-paid skilled workers to do that sort of work, and you could anticipate that if an MRO provider sets up operations at Forbes, there will be other companies that need to come along to supply their needs. So it is the sort of pursuit that will presumably lead to business growth in a lot of different ways. That's why the MTAA is really rethinking what we need to do to meet that need. We are looking very seriously at our infrastructure. We have the longest runway in the state and plenty of taxiways and a great deal of apron space. What we're working on standing up now are the sorts of hangers that are big enough to pull one of these wide-body jets into. We've been collaborating with the Kansas Legislature, and we're very pleased that they and the Governor saw fit to appropriate some money for us to continue moving forward with our plans to stand up a hangar complex. We're also collaborating with Washburn Tech to make sure that when that business comes, when we have these jumbo jets flying into Topeka to be reconfigured, we've got the sorts of airframe and power plant mechanics here on the ground who are ready to do that work. And we're delighted to know that our longtime partners, the 190th Air Refueling Wing, who we've always known they're an important part of our culture and our ecosystem, they actually, at this very moment, have something on the order of 100 to 120 A&amp;P mechanics doing this sort of work every day. They're sort of our hidden jewel when it comes to workforce on this project. There's a process for getting them certified so that they can do this type of work on civilian aircraft rather than the military aircraft they work on right now. But collaborating with them, we feel a high level of confidence that Topeka will be able to step forward and meet the demand once it gets here. So as far as we're concerned, the future of aviation in Topeka is bright. We are excited about what it holds, and we're happy to tell you about it.
So this is all great, but how realistic, what's the timeline for something like this really happening? Because we've been talking for some time about the reinvigoration of the Topeka Regional Airport and going after some of these different prospects. Where do we stand on that realistically? Is it all going to be, because Wichita is the airport capital of the world and tends to get most of these contracts. So where do we stand? Where do we start, I guess? Let me start with, where do we start with retooling and reimagining the Topeka Regional Airport?
Thank you. That is, it's clearer to begin that way. It seems abundantly clear to us that unless we start making some of these moves to beef up the infrastructure, get some of these hangers built, there won't be a point at which we can welcome that business. So that's why this is the first part of the play, is getting the hard assets ready to field that kind of business. It is not something that's going to happen overnight. There are a number of kind of built-in reasons. We're at least 18 to, you know, 24 months out, if not a little bit longer, but we do have to start, and I can tell you that the opportunity in Wichita, coming out of Wichita, is the most prominent one, and frankly, the most compelling, but it's not the only one. We get calls all the time from companies that maybe they don't have triple sevens, but they've got similar types of large jets, and they're asking about whether we have someplace that they could put them and work on them. If we had hangers like this, we feel very confident we wouldn't have any trouble filling them with people who need this type of facility. So it seems clear to us that that's the step we need to take. And then in terms of a fully blossomed vision of the Boeing jets from Wichita filling up Salina's hangers and Topeka's hangers, that's a little tough to judge. The timeline does have a way of being fluid, which can be frustrating to those of us working on it every day, but probably looking at the 2028 timeframe perhaps, but we're not waiting for that. We're planning to pursue whatever opportunities work.
I mean, because even if you were to look at a facility like Walmart, which went up really pretty quickly, that was more than a year in construction, and so would you anticipate something similar if you were to start building hangers tomorrow?
Well, I don't want to pose as a construction expert. I think that standing these hangers up is probably not that time-consuming. What's going to be most time-consuming is getting the environmental work done on the site that we end up choosing, getting the site ready. Ultimately, standing here today and then having an operational hangar is still probably at least that kind of timeframe, which is why when I stood before the Legislature to explain why we needed some support to keep our plans moving forward, I pleaded with them that the time is now. If we wait until the phone rings and somebody says, hey, I've got a jet I'd like to bring to your airport, we'll already be a year and a half behind. That's why we're doing the work now to be, have the site prepped, environmental work done, building stood up, then we'll be ready.
As far as the finances of it, the MTAA is its own taxing entity, but are you asking or thinking about asking like GoToPika and JADO for financial assistance in some of these projects as well?
We are talking to GoToPika all the time. I interface with them multiple times a week, and we are working together to figure out what the most sensible revenue stack will be. It will entail plenty of our own resources, hopefully some state support, maybe some federal involvement. I would anticipate that the JADO involvement would probably, the answer is yes, but it will probably come in later in the process when we're actually looking at a particular company bringing particular jobs to say, what do we need to do to close the deal with that company? GoToPika's also been indispensable, helping with, you know, the workforce collaboration, et cetera. So none of that is finalized, but I think we own the responsibility for getting the infrastructure ready to go, and probably GoToPika will be a partner as we get a little closer to the, you know, opening the doors. Does that make sense?
It does. Commissioner Mays?
Yeah, so maybe this is probably more of a Brian question, since you're an engineer. I mean, do we have engineering and designs done that we can, I know FAA seems to always be a challenge to work with, no offense to FAA if they're watching, but, you know, just to get that clock ticking, I mean, do we have designs like already submitted or anything like that?
So we're kind of in flux on what the actual site might be. We had an initial site on the south side of the airport property that we started some preliminary engineering work on. That turned out to be pretty problematic and costly. The overall earthwork necessary for the size of area we needed was just going to really cause more problems than we were able to do. So we're right now in the process of looking at a couple of others, whether that's internal or adjacent to our complex there. And now with the Legislature's assistance, we're going to dive into site selection again and get that preliminary engineering started so that we can best evaluate, yeah, what hangers look like, and then back to the FAA approval process and what that looks like for flight patterns and approval.
And when you talk about the site, you're talking about specifically just for the Nayar project or for whoever, whatever else projects need to happen? I mean, are we making it bigger than Nayar?
Hangar generic, I think to start with, but definitely with a footprint that could facilitate that if that kept moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Another question on a kind of a different subject, but airport-related, you know, the one thing that constituents always ask about is commercial air service, is that ever, you know, a possibility? I know with the new air terminal and, with the new terminal in Kansas City, I'd heard there are rumors that there might be more of an opportunity to get like a discount brand vacation style.
That's what we're working, as a matter of fact, I was going to be talking to our Board tomorrow to let them know, I just had a conversation with another airline just last week, and they're still interested. It's all about revenue guarantees and making sure that we can help them offset that risk a little bit. So they are interested in that. The main line, the legacy-type air carriers, that's going to be a harder chore. The pilot shortage continues. It's improving every day, but it's still, I mean, we're really hurt by that mass retirement during COVID, where we're down pilots, we're down aircraft right now. But the airline that I was just speaking to is looking at a destination-type service, starting off with, you know, one or two cities three times a week and growing on that. So it's still an opportunity, it's still a possibility to do that, and we're always going to keep trying to bring that in here.
And then kind of to piggyback on that, I know that there was an effort to try and get a customs agent here, did that happen or?
No, that's a tough one.
Okay.
It literally will take an act of Congress to make that happen.
Okay.
And I've been through that before at another airport I worked at. Someone has to be ready to step up and pay a rather large hefty bill to bring customs in. We do have customs available for military operations, so if there's a troop movement coming in, we are the primary location for Fort Riley's deployments and redeployments, where they will come in and do the customs here at the airport in Topeka, but it's limited strictly to military operations.
Okay. Commissioner Rippon?
Curtis, have we looked into, or is there a need for like a distribution center where you're flying goods in and out, kind of like a FedEx-type operation? I mean, we're kind of here at crossroads here at Topeka, and we already have some major distribution centers being in the center of the country. I just wondered if we are being looked at for something like that?
I would say that's something we wouldn't turn away, but as far as a sweet spot or something that we can offer a unique, you know, selling point on, we're maybe more focused on the repair of the, you know, the MRO part, but.
May I?
Yes, please.
We did actually have a company that was interested in doing that, a distribution system that would be based in Topeka, and we lost out on it because we didn't have a hangar. This would put eight to 10 regional jets in and out of this airport every morning between three and five, and distributing medical supplies around the country using feet as a option. And we lost that. We had a hangar, they considered it, it just was going to be too much of an issue for them to move into that, and when they outthrew it, move into another one. So.
That's a great point. I'm glad you remembered that.
That's right. Commissioner Mays?
So we've talked a lot about Topeka Regional. At Billard, I know that T-hangers, we've got, a couple of them are in pretty decent shape, but a couple are in terrible shape. You said there's some painting and things going on. Is there any plan to build new ones at all to expand that footprint?
There is a, yeah, our airport plan includes the possibility of standing up some new T-hangers, and presumably that will happen. We're also looking at what might be a slightly better fit for the demand, which is building some new box hangers, you know, 10,000, 12,000 square foot hangers that would potentially be home to sort of transient jets as pilots come across the country, they need a place to put their plane overnight. That can be a good business move, a great way to get more value out of the property over there. So we're looking at both, and so the answer is yes, but there's a little bit of a focus on those box hangers now because there seems to be more calls coming in for those at this point.
Right.
Great. Any other questions? Well, it's a lot of prospects and a lot of hope there, Curtis. You've got big shoes to fill in trying to get this to come off, so I trust that you guys are working hard at it, and we look forward to continuing to work on this. So thank you very much.
Can I ask the smallest of questions?
Yes.
Nothing as serious as what these gentlemen just asked, but on Saturday mornings, I thought the best place to eat breakfast was Tammy's Cafe. I don't know why people are laughing, other than it does say a lot about my taste, I'll allow for that. So what's the plans going forward? Do we have anything?
We, following a lengthy process, we have identified the, one of two future food service providers in that new terminal building over there, and we're in discussions right now. It's not in our purview to reveal their identity yet, but I can assure you that they're local operators, and Topeka's are going to be delighted with what they find over there and the offerings that will be made, breakfast, lunch, and dinner over at the new terminal building. It's going to be exciting when we get opened up.
When, what's the timeline on that, do you think?
Probably later in June. We'd love to hurry that, but oddly enough, you hear the word supply chain everywhere you go, and it turns out that there are supply chain issues that make it kind of tough to order up what you need to open a restaurant at this point. Who knew? It was rubber gloves a couple of years ago, but yeah, that's probably what we're looking at is later in June.
Big shoes to fill.
All right.
Yep. Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks.
Our secondary presentation this morning is from the Extension Office, and Candace Stiles is here to give us an update.
Good morning, Commissioners. Candace Stiles, Shawnee County Extension Office Director. Happy to bring to you our first quarter report for the Shawnee County Extension Office. I prepared for you, as always, I like to start with our demographics. There we go. It's really important for us that we stay in parity with Shawnee County, meaning the people that our office serves looks like the people of our county. And according to K-State, we reach parity, which means we are close enough. We had 2,756 direct educational contacts in the first quarter, which is a really good number for that January through March, when you think most of our programs are really doing a lot in the summer. But school enrichment and expanded food and nutrition are busy year-round. I'm going to start today by talking about our 4H program. Spring break is a great time to do some 4H programming because those kids are out of school, so let's go do some leadership development. And Grace took six youth to Rock Springs Ranch to try out the High Ropes Course along with some leadership lessons while they were doing that. We haven't had 4H ambassadors, which is a program for those older youth for quite some time, but this group of youth had such a good time, that was the conversation on the way home in the van. How do we do this more often? How do we have more opportunities? And so the first planning meeting for a new ambassador group is actually happening this month in April, and I would have to say it was probably because of this trip Grace planned with them and for them. In expanded food and nutrition, Lisa has really been targeting youth programs and has been working in T-Calc and Eisenhower Middle School. We can't get pictures of students with Lisa's program, so I was like, what do you have for pictures? And she's like, our vegetable lasagna, which, you know, I'm from southwest Kansas, so I was like, where's the beef? But it's good for you. She had 84 students at Eisenhower do this teen cuisine program, and 79% of those students reported that they improved their abilities to choose healthy foods. So they're getting the education about nutrition while they are making the healthy food and trying it, and it changes a lot of hearts and minds about fruits and vegetables. Our agriculture agent, Abigail, started her quarter with the Topeka Farm Show over at the Stormont Vale Events Center, and normally, we'd have our information out on a table, and if people want to stop and ask a question of the extension agent, they have the opportunity to do that. But this year, Abigail put together a quiz with the QuizBowl buzzers and sounds and scores, and she had people test their extension knowledge there at our booth, which stopped people long enough to have some meaningful conversations about agriculture and education. She recorded over the three days that she visited with 126 individuals, and that was like actually stopping and talking, not just picking up a brochure. So that's fun. And then Lane in Horticulture, not long after that, had the Kansas Garden Show over at the Events Center. You can tell we had a couple fake springs in the first quarter because he had 97 walk-in questions that first quarter. That's a lot. He was happy for the response line to start with the master gardeners. But he also presented three times at the garden show with choosing annuals for Kansas, which is always a common question we have when people come in. What grows here? What should I be buying? So he got to talk to people about that. In February, I got to help do the Youth Entrepreneurship Challenge at Washburn University. This is a statewide contest, but we host it here in Shawnee County with Omni Circle, Shawnee Startups, and GoToPika. And youth come in with a business con- with Omni Circle, Shawnee Startups, and GoToPica. And youth come in with a business concept. It can be an actual business that they are doing, but it can also just be an idea. They prepare a business plan, a business pitch, and a trade show booth, and then they compete against other business concepts. And our winning team there in the middle, Wayne's Natural Herbs and Products, is going to the Kansas Entrepreneurship Challenge tomorrow in Manhattan on K-State's campus to compete against all the other local YEC winners. So it's a fun thing. I do four learning sessions in January to prepare the youth to do the contest in February. So I really enjoy working with them as well. Now, I'm happy to bring up our Family and Resource Management Agent, Susan Fangman, to talk more in detail about her programs. In Extension, Family and Consumer Science Agents, FCS agents, cover about as wide an area as any of our areas in Extension. So the boards and program development committees really hone in on all the programs an FCS agent can do, and in Shawnee County, Family Resource Management was it for us. So excited to let Susan talk about her programs.
Good morning, Commissioners. As you'll see on my slide, there's three main program areas that I work in. I coordinate free tax assistance here in Shawnee County. I'm a Senior Health Insurance Counselor for Kansas, and I coordinate the Watkins program here in the county. I also have a numerous amount of food safety and food preservation questions come through my office. I'm going to spend most of my time talking about the free tax assistance here. I lead the Asset Building Coalition here in the county, and the Asset Building Coalition consists of VITA and AARP volunteers, and we get funding every year from the United Way of $5,000. And I really hone in, and I lead the VITA program here in the county. It consists of about 35 volunteers right now, and we work with a lot of partners around the county that provide us space and equipment to do our work. When I know I'm going to be asked questions later, I always like to preface that I am not a tax preparer. I just work behind the scenes and coordinate our efforts. So there are VITA sites all across the country. VITA sites are managed by the IRS. They provide us training material. They assign us a rep that I work with closely. We're audited by them periodically, and actually, one of our sites was audited this year, and we passed with 100%. VITA sites then are operated by partners. So in this case, K-State Research and Extension, Shawnee County is the partner. There are five other K-State Research and Extension entities that lead VITA programs, but the one in Shawnee County is the largest one, led by K-State Research and Extension. And then our sites are staffed by trained volunteers. Now, we are not out there trying to do everybody's taxes. We have a target audience of trying to serve those families that make $68,000 or less. There are a lot of things out of scope. We don't do real complicated returns. We're just there to try to help people with their easy tax return and to help them get that filed. The cost of filing a return is a barrier for a lot of people in our community, so we try to help with that. My volunteers are super excited when tax season starts every year, but we're also excited when it ends, and so today's our last day. So I don't have this year's numbers yet. Candace will bring them at another meeting here. But last year's numbers, so these were what we did in 2023 for tax year 2022. Our VITA and AARP volunteers filed 3,313 federal returns with a similar number of Kansas returns. The IRS lets its figure that the average cost of a return is $225. So with that figure, we helped taxpayers save approximately $745,000 in tax prep fees, and we helped them receive just under $3.5 million in total refunds. That money goes back into our community, spent buying groceries and clothes and car repairs, things like that. And just to give you an idea of who we're serving, the average adjusted income of those we served that year was just under $30,000. So we depend on a lot of partners to help us make this work. As I said, the United Way of Cal Valley gives us a $5,000 grant every year. The Shawnee County Extension Education Foundation has been very key in helping us update our equipment, because at several of our sites, we use our own laptops and our own printers, so they've helped us update our equipment. And we are currently at four sites here in town, and we could not do that without these partners. CRC Center at Lundgren not only provides us a classroom to work in. Sharon over there takes all of her appointments for Lundgren as well as the Topeka Library. So her phone rings off the hook starting mid-January. We have a site at IEBW Local Union 226 in North Topeka who provide us space every year. The Rossville Community Library provides us space three Saturdays during tax season. And the Topeka and Shawnee County Public Library's been a partner with us for a really long time. Not only do they provide space, but they let us use their computer equipment, Provideus Inc., and also do a fabulous job of helping us advertise the program. We would love to expand the work we do, because there's, like, our phone already was ringing this morning, people wanting to get their taxes done. We'd love to help more people, but we need more volunteers. So if there's anybody out there watching, interested in learning to prepare taxes, we train you. And it's a great group of volunteers to work with. It's really making a big difference for a lot of people in our community. So that's it on the taxes that I work with. I'm also a Senior Health Insurance Counselor for Kansas. I go to training every year, and I'm able to provide free, unbiased, confidential counseling to anyone wanting to learn more about Medicare. I do new-to-Medicare appointments as well as during Part D open enrollment. A lot of people, Medicare beneficiaries, don't realize if you are on Medicare A or B and/or B, and you're on a standalone drug plan, those things are meant to be shopped every year. So I help people look through those. And then last year during open enrollment, I counseled 165 clients from mid-October through the first week of December. I helped 65 of them change plans, and it saved them just over $108,000. And then my last slide's on Watkins, which is, we started that very end of March this year. Watkins is a program put on by K-State Research and Extension, and it's just a way to promote getting out, moving more, making better decisions about nutrition and your overall health. This year, we're working with Douglas County, and we've got 450 participants, which has been the highest participation we've had for quite a few years now. So that's my programming in a nutshell. Does anyone have any questions?
Ms. Rippon?
I don't have any questions, but I think it's a, what a great service, not only just for the tax, but getting people through the, all the Medicare sign-ups. I know there's a lot of questions and different avenues there, but thank you for doing all that.
Yeah.
It's great.
Commissioner Mays?
Yeah, I agree. It's great. I think a lot of people don't understand what the Extension Office does, and so, you know, this is, these are great services that you guys provide. And I think most people, they think of the plant sale and things like that, the real big items, and so I think it's fantastic. These are, a lot of times, folks that don't know where to go, and you provide services for them with the help of many other community partners. And so it's fantastic. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And actually, this might be more for Candace, just, I know the legislative session's not done yet, but are your offices, is it paying attention to legislation and potential issues that may change the Extension Office across the state of Kansas?
So I'm like, what? No, we get updates on Mondays from K-State from the people who go up there and testify, and right now, we're hearing a lot about K-State 105. I haven't heard maybe what you're referring to yet, so yeah.
Okay. I'm just making sure that, I mean, because there are some changes that are proposed and looking at coming to Kansas and changing the Extension Office. I'm not sure how it will affect Shawnee County. It may affect more smaller areas and smaller counties more than it would affect Shawnee County.
Yes, and also, there is an extension law for districts. And so I know sometimes they look to change how districts can, because they levy a tax if more than one county goes together, so, yeah.
Okay. Just making sure you guys are watching and paying attention, because we are too.
I appreciate that, because my ability to report to the Commission and to communicate with you is very wanted by other Extension Offices in Kansas. They cannot get in front of their Commissioners. All they can do is email, and so I've always appreciated the support and the communication that we can have with this body.
Yep, very good. Thank you, Candace.
Thank you.
Those were our presentations for this morning. Our next item is public comment. If there is anybody from the public wishing to make comment, seeing none. Our next item is administrative communication. Are there any administrative communications this morning? Commissioner Mays, anything?
I will not be here Thursday. I'll be representing Shawnee County at the Kansas County Commissioners Association, so.
Very good. Commissioner Rippon?
Represent as well. Yeah, we have Tulip Time still, or Twilight, Twilight's, Tulip Time at, what is the name of that thing?
Tulip Time at Old Prairie Town.
That's it. Well, no, it's a, it's a twilight. Anyway.
Fridays and Saturdays.
Very good.
I was there Saturday, and it was packed.
They're going Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and they're going this weekend and next weekend, so be sure to get out there. If you haven't been out there, you're missing out. And if you've been there before, take a friend and show them.
Gets a little better every year, too.
It is. They keep adding to it.
We are forecasted for some weather over the next couple of days, so hopefully that will not affect the tulips. But please be weather-aware. And finally, I'd like to recognize that today is the work anniversary for Suzie, our Administrative Assistant here at the County Commission, and so there are some treats outside. And so make sure you stop by and have a treat and tell Suzie, "Thanks for being here," and all that she does for us. With that, we're adjourned.